Good evening. I'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Shrewsbury Planning Board to order. First order of business is to review and approve the minutes from August 7th, 2025, and June 5th, 2025. Has everybody had the opportunity to review these minutes?
Yes.
Any questions, concerns, comments?
Just a minor clarification on the June 5th minutes for the Assam Henderson petition. It's just a typo. It says Mr. Fitzgerald "and." It should be Mr. Fitzgerald asks. The question about if there were signs, going to be any signage. It's just a typo.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the August 7th minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and can I get a motion to approve the June 5th, 2025 minutes?
I move that we approve the June 5th, 2025 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
With Tim's change, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, with Tim's change. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. I was not at that meeting. Okay. Next order of business, review and sign bills. This evening, we do have two bills for approval. One is for Graves Engineering for work done at 308-312 Boston Turnpike in the amount of $508.40. And another bill from Graves Engineering for 297 Cherry Street in the amount of $1,585.04, totaling $2,093.44. Any questions, comments, or concerns on these bills?
We can motion to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay. Board member comments tonight. Do you know, do you have anything? Or no?
No comment.
Steve?
No comments this month.
No comments.
Okay. Next, staff report.
Thank you. So I do have a couple items to bring to the board and public's attention this evening. So as part of our North Quincy and Complete Streets program, we will be holding our last neighborhood forum prior to construction of improvements along that roadway. That will be held September 23rd at 5:30 PM at the Donahue Rowing Center. That project is where the town was awarded $500,000 from the state to add sidewalks and restriping to add bicycle lane accommodations for the gaps that exist from Route 9 up to the USPS facility along North Quincy and Ave. So that project will be moving forward. This will be a neighborhood forum to discuss the operations. The bid was awarded to Amarello, and they will have representatives who will be present to answer any technical questions, as well as municipal staff available to answer any questions from the public.
So that can be on the west side, right?
Correct, yep. And then we do have two active surveys that I wanted to draw the board's attention to and members of the public. So as part of a public transit study along Maple Ave, we do have a survey that is active. We're asking for people to participate in that. It's very short, but will give us some insight into amenity spaces and public transit along that Route 15 WRTA route. So that study is being done in coordination with the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. In addition, we have a survey for placemaking initiatives. The survey can be found on our town website, as well as flyers are available this evening. And they can also be found on the colorful chairs that you may have seen around town. So as we're doing that placemaking initiative, we're looking for feedback from the community and how that's going and their insights into that program. So again, just asking the public to participate in those. That input is valuable for us as we proceed with those projects. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have a number of A&R plans that we need to approve. We have four, A&R being Approval Not Required Plan submissions for the following properties: 515 Grafton Street, 84 Holman Street, 314 Gulf Street, and 3369 Green Street. These plans have been reviewed by staff for compliance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 81P, and they have been recommended for endorsement. Do I have a motion to endorse the plans received and authorize the town engineer to sign on the board's behalf?
I move that we approve the A&R plans.
Is there a second?
You want me to list them, so we have it for the record?
I think we just, yeah, we just did, yep.
Yeah, I'd second that, just noting that this is for 515 Grafton Street, 84 Holman Street, 314 Gulf Street, and 33 through 69 Green Street.
Okay, do we need to do a roll call on that? No? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? As have it. Excellent.
Easy.
Easy. All right, next on the agenda, meetings and hearings. First up is the proposed nitrogen tank pad. This is a de minimis change request for Charles River Labs, 334 South Street.
So this project is proposing to add a nitrogen storage tank to the rear of the property. So this is Charles Rivers Lab. It does have bollards proposed for protection. It's been reviewed by staff for conformance. And so it does fall outside the scale of a field change, but we felt that it was in the scope as a utility to de minimis change request, so.
They're publicly traded company. They couldn't bring somebody? Okay.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Any concerns from the, any concerns from the fire department?
No, they did review it, and as part of that process, they've provided some comments back, but that's part of their, they'll have their own separate approval
Okay.
process.
Okay.
This doesn't require a vote. It's just a-
Because we have to find-
Yeah, you have to have a finding, a vote to find it.
Okay, all right. So can I get a motion to accept this de minimis change request?
I'd make a motion that we find that the request is de minimis, and then we approve the same.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? As have it. Excellent. Next item, proposed parking modifications. Again, another de minimis change request. F9 Properties LLC for 60614 Boston Turnpike. Hi there, how are you?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. My name is Matt Hammer with Landplex Engineering. We're at 60 Fletcher Street in Lowell, Mass. I haven't been in front of the board for some years, so I have a presentation board, or I don't know if you do something on the screen, just to show-
Whichever you're comfortable with.
So I am here this evening representing F9 Properties, who own the property at 600 Boston Turnpike. Some years ago, we had this project approved for a proposed use that had a different configuration of the interior petition space within the building. And now they have wanted to modify the petitions in this location, which ended up taking away some of the warehouse space, square footage, and increasing it with retail square footage, of which that was approximately 1,600 square feet of retail space that's being added. So in order to comply with the parking regulations, we needed to accommodate seven additional spaces. And we're going to be providing those seven additional spaces in this location here. Those will be line striped, but will be on the existing paved area. Additionally, there'll be a small pad located here to create another entrance into that retail space. So we're here this evening for this de minimis change in front of the board. I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
I move that we deem this a de minimis change and approve it as presented on the plans and by Mr. Hammer.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, proposed mixed-use development site plan approval and special permit for Prestige Property Development LLC at 308 and 312 Boston Turnpike. This is a new public hearing, so just-
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, September 4th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Select Board's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, to hear the application of Prestige Property Development, 13 Presidential Drive, Southborough, Mass., 01772, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7F for site plan approval and Section 7M for a special permit by the planning board to allow for the construction of two residential buildings with a total of 48 units and to renovate the two existing buildings. The proposed layout plan is shown on a plan accompanied by the application that is named Quote Site Development Plan for 308 and 312 Boston Turnpike End Quote, prepared by J.M. Granier Associates Incorporated, 118 Turnpike Road, Suite 200, Southborough, Mass., 01772, dated August 5th, 2025, and stamped by Kevin J. Jarvis, PLS, and Carlos Ferrera, PE. The subject project is located at 312 Boston Turnpike, southerly of Boston Turnpike and east of Gordon Road, and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 32 Plot 6000001 and Tax Plate 32 Plot 548000. Copy of the application and plans may be seen in the Office of Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the planning board website at www.shrewsbyma.gov/ongoingprojects.
Welcome.
Thank you. For the record, John Granier, on behalf of Prestige Properties. With me is Ayman Al Dohjar, who is with Prestige Properties. He's one of the principals. So as you just read in the notification, this is for a proposed mixed-use development in the Lakeway Overlay District. Just for reference, this is, this property is located on the eastbound side of Route 9, approximately across from Fairlawn Plaza, where the subway is. It's bordered to the east by the power line easement. That's about 250 feet wide on the easterly side of the property. There is the transmission station right here. That's by cell code. That abutts them on the back. And then on the westerly side are a mix. There is a commercial building on the corner of Gordon Road and Route 9, and a parking lot. And then there are residential abutters further to the south along Gordon Road. Quick overview, this project does consist of two properties. There is 308 Boston Turnpike, which is this property right here. Historically, that was an old salon. They don't have any tenants in there right now. We just found out from the building department, I guess, that the garage building that's just behind it, that was a repair garage, and they did have a separate repair garage license. That use has not been active in a number of years. They don't plan on trying to revive anything on that. So that is just an accessory garage to number 308. So they are looking to give 308 a facelift. It's kind of a, you know, nobody's been in it for a little while. They're going to give it a facelift and try to improve that as part of this project. And then in the rear portion on 312, construct two 24-unit, three-story apartment buildings that would be accessed solely off of Route 9. As you see here, this would be the parking associated to support those two buildings. And the, just, obviously, I'm sure you're familiar with the Market Basket Project, the same architect and the same building styles. They have 24-unit buildings. So same architect, it'll be the same type of architecture for those buildings. And those buildings are a mix of one- and two-bedroom apartments, no three bedrooms. To, for amenities for the project, they do have an area over here that they'll have a patio area, may have some grilling stations. They do have areas for bicycle parking for any of the abutters, I mean, for the residents. We do have a green space over here. We purposefully made this a green space so we'd have a larger buffer to the abutters over on Gordon Road. For screening, we are proposing evergreens right at the property line before you get to this green space along here. And then they would have a solid six-foot privacy fence that would go along this entire property line, abutting anybody on Gordon Road. We did have a community outreach meeting last week that was in attendance by a number of the abutters. We did get some good feedback. In general, I would say their biggest concern was screening, number one. And number two, they didn't want there to, this to be a cut-through for anybody. There are walking trails that are in the vicinity of the power lines. And we did, talking to the planning department, proactively reached out to the Trails Committee, and they thought it was a great idea, having the ability to give more accessibility. There is an access road that does service the substation that does provide access to the back. The concern of the neighbors was they don't want people parking in the back and cutting into the property, or walking through the park, through the property and cutting through their yards. And we heard that loud and clear. So with that, what we are proposing to do, and it's not on this original set, we'll make some revisions to that, is to make sure that we provide fencing, not only along the westerly portion of the property, but also going around the perimeter of the property, particularly to the south, and then also beef up landscaping in the area of the south side of the property in this area, so that they'll have good vertical screening, one, not just visually, but for sound, so that the sound doesn't travel, they were concerned, because right now it's, although there was a use on here a number of years ago, the woods have grown up relatively thick, so they don't want the sound bouncing through, so they want another, beef up that landscaping and the greenery for both sound and for privacy. In terms of parking, we, as I said, we're going to be solely accessing the property off of Route 9. There will be no other access from the rear driveway that does abut the property solely off of Route 9. And we meet all of our parking requirements for not only the, for the apartment use, but also for the, for the commercial use that fronts on Route 9. And I think there would be an ability to have a little bit of the parking for the existing building on Route 9. It's, as is with a lot of these buildings on Route 9, the parking's a little funky, where this use would be primarily used during the day, and the parking demand for the apartments would be less during the day. I think there's a good opportunity to have for employee parking or owner parking, they could park during the day in the back to free up parking on Route 9 for any potential customers or whoever might be coming in. They don't have a user right now, but I think that would be a good accessory to be, have for, for anybody visitor parking or someone coming in to visit this building, that it would free up some spots during the day for whether it's employee or owner parking in the back. We did get comments from both the planning department today. We reviewed those. We have no issue with those. We can address those, and we will be addressing those. We also received comments from Graves Engineering. Those were nothing that's, nothing that's a showstopper. They wanted to confirm that we do have access around for emergency vehicles. The drainage was in, in order for the most part. They wanted us to do one additional test pit. The test pits that we did, we had done in the back portions of the property. It's all good sandy gravelly material. We do have subsurface infiltration under the parking lot in this area, so they wanted one confirmatory test there. We are handling all of our stormwater subsurface, no open-air basins. We're keeping everything subsurface in some, a recharge area in this area and in a recharge area underneath the parking lot in this area. So there won't be any discharge of water to any abutting properties. Everything will be handled through 100-year storm subsurface on-site. So I think I've touched on some of the main topics. If you have any questions or comments, we'd like to hear them so that we can address those.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dina.
For folks that want to take Route 9 westbound from the property, what do, what do they do?
They're going to have to-
They have to go all the way to the light and then?
Go to the light and swing a U-turn up at the bowling alley at Oak Street, and then head, head west. And also for people who are coming either from Maple Ave coming down, or if they're heading west on Route 9, they're going to have to go down by, you know, White City over by the-
Walgreens.
Walgreens and take a U-turn, just like any other use on, on Route 9.
Okay.
Jeff, any items you want to talk through on this?
So we, we did develop a comment letter that's been provided late, late today. I do have to note that in that letter, it does state that we did not receive a traffic impact statement, but that was incorrect, that it was included in the impact study. So I apologize for missing that comment. But the balance of the, the comment letter is there, just some minor edits to some of the application materials, as well as some plan considerations. As the applicant noted, we did have the community forum. Some of the other comments that were received was some concern of the proximity of the, the building to the power lines. And the original concept plans that were provided to this, to our office, the building was on the other side, closer to the residential abutters. So our recommendation was to move that, to reduce the massing towards that, towards those residential abutters. So, but that was a concern that was raised in relation to, you know, either proximity to the abutters or proximity to the power lines for the board's consideration. Again, you know, all, we took copious notes in terms of that. I'm happy to kind of formalize a summary of the discussion from our notes on that public forum and some of the other comments that were received. But I think those, and then what was represented by Mr. Granier are kind of the bulk of what was discussed.
Okay.
So it's, so it's a right-in, right-out only?
Right-in, right-out, correct.
The proposed driveway essentially is where, there's a blank white sign there right now.
That's correct.
About.
About, yes.
More or less. In terms of pedestrian safety, I imagine a lot of residents, if this happens, are going to be walking across the street to Fairlawn Plaza. How's that going to work?
There is a sidewalk along Route 9.
Signaled crosswalk.
And then down, is there a signalized crosswalk when you, at the, like, where, where the subway is?
A little further down.
A little further down?
50 to 100 feet west of the subway. There's a signalized crosswalk that takes you to the median, and then another crosswalk to the other side.
Right, and we'll have a sidewalk going up in front of both buildings, and then a sidewalk that leads out to the existing sidewalk that's on Route 9.
Okay. And the, the results of the traffic impact study are, I must have missed it?
Yeah, so it's a traffic impact statement that looks at the, essentially, the peak trips in and out of the site. And in terms of the intersection out of the site onto Route 9, that forms the basis, if the board, to make a decision if a full traffic study is warranted, given the, the scale of the project and the findings. But essentially, I can go-
I can give you the quick, the quick summary numbers on, on that is, as you know, when these analyses are done, it's based on the peak hour, morning peak, evening peak, based on 48 units. The peak, in the peak hour, in the morning, is about 25 trips in the peak hour in the morning, and about 30 trips in the peak hour in the evening. So roughly a car every other minute. And again, this will require a curb cut permit from Mass DOT. So once we feel like we're, we're comfortable with the layout with this, we will be filing for a curb cut permit with Mass DOT, and that's always subject to their review and approval.
So that's pending?
Correct. And in our experience, how it typically goes is DOT does not want you submitting to them until you're, you have a plan that's close to approval. Because otherwise, every time you have a concept plan, send it into DOT, oh, it changed. Send it back to DOT, and they don't, they don't want all the back and forth and back and forth. They want to know that it's a real project, and then you submit to them. That's typically how we've done it in the past.
Okay. Can you shed some light on the, on the private sewer line? That's confusing to me.
And I don't even know how long ago there was, I believe, a daycare that was on this property. You can see some old remnants, like some old fences, some, but that's long gone. There was, or I should say was, there is a, it's a 10-inch sewer line that comes, there is an easement, comes down from the south to north, and there was a 10-inch sewer line that comes into the property. So we will be connecting these buildings into that existing sewer service. And the reason that we know it's a 10-inch is because when we were out doing test pits, we bumped into it. So it saved us some searching. We found it.
Okay.
Other board questions?
I have just one comment. On the property to the south and then to the east, do you have currently vegetative buffer, natural growth, anything? And are you going to keep that if you do have?
There is, so within the edges of the power line easement, there is some vegetated growth along the property line. So we will be maintaining whatever we can along this property line, as well as- The fence that is for the, for the substation, that chain link fence?
Yes.
Is that with, that's within the substation's property?
It is, yes. The substation owns beyond that, on that, they own that gravel path, I believe it's-
Right, so there is some, there is some existing vegetation there that's beyond us.
Correct.
And obviously, we're not going to be touching that. And then on our side of the property line, we are going to be, we're going to be beefing that up, so that, one, for some, we did have a gentleman who lived a little bit further down Gordon Road, so he wanted some screening. And then obviously, for the, for the people who live here, they don't want to be staring at the substation either. It's not very attractive. So we are going to beef up that landscaping.
Good part?
Yeah, I got a bunch.
Okay.
I think it's kind of a reach to call this a mixed-use project. You got two tired old buildings on front of Route 9, small. And you got two large apartment buildings on a two-and-a-half, essentially a two-acre site. And I, I know the- And I, I know these, this was the same design that was used for Edgemere Crossing. But Edgemere Crossing's eighty acres. And this would be the third, third, I believe, uh, Lakeway project. First two were nice, including the one you did at Polar Views. I liked the architecture. This architecture, in my opinion, is lacking. I think we lack all sorts of aesthetics on this project. I wanna see more information as to specifics as to what you're gonna do and when you're gonna do it on what you're calling the mixed use component. I wanna see architecials. I wanna see more architectural details on everything that you've submitted in this project. Otherwise, I'm not on board. I think a full traffic study is necessary. You're asking for more density than would be allowed in the multifamily zone. You're asking for more density than would be allowed in the MBTA community zone. So you're asking for a lot and it's a special permit, and we don't have to give it if, if you don't get the votes.
Understood.
So I think you got a lot of work to do.
Okay.
And, and this is just a start. And I don't like the elevations for this site at all. Again, Edgemere Crossing, my firm was involved in it in the interest of full disclosure, but that's eighty acres.
Yes.
And we got a market basket. I have two tired old buildings. We're gonna give you forty-eight acre, forty-eight units on, uh, two acres. It seems like a lot. You know, I lived through the Beale School project and we tortured. The board tortured them, the abutters tortured them, and there were fifty-three units on four acres. And the world was gonna end when we permitted this. And there were seven acre, uh, seven thousand square feet, I believe, of commercial space that we held their feet to the fire. They wanted to reduce it 'cause they said the numbers didn't work. They need the multifamily to make this work. Well, this is a multifamily project. You gotta give more if you're going in the Lakeway District. And again, I, 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 I think that you ought to talk to Mr. Gruninger, find out who, who his client used for the, the architecials on that Polar Views project, 'cause I like the way it looks. And my, my other comment would be, and I don't mean to tear into you, this is just the first meeting.
Yes.
And I'm just one voice. But I also looked at the mix of units, and I don't think that if you go to, i- if we present these units, the affordable units to the DHCD and say they're all one bedroom units, that they're gonna accept that as part of the fifteen percent. I just don't see that happening. So I think you gotta work on that too. So I, I think we got a long way to go here. In my opinion. I, I, but again, I'm just one voice.
Just for, for, um, over at Edgemere, was that one in, ones and twos?
They got away, yeah, they did get away with ones and twos.
Okay, all right.
That, that's okay. I don't have a problem with no threes, but ones and twos are fine. But if you're gonna say all the affordables are ones, we'll never get them.
Right.
They'll never be part of our unit count.
I, I'm dealing with DHCD on some other projects.
Yeah.
I'll reach out to them and just kinda get their temperature.
You might not wanna reach out too hard. You might wanna just kinda mix it up and-
Yeah, just say, well, yeah.
It came up in the comment letter, uh, when, when we did the zone change, that there were no three bedroom units.
Oh, it did?
It did, but it, it kinda fell by the wayside.
Yeah, I'll just-
They didn't do anything.
I'll say I'm asking for a friend.
Yeah. But work on the archi- you, you gotta do more with the aesthetics.
Okay.
And it's, it was, in my mind, it should be a condition that you gotta build what you consider the, and improve a- at least to the shell level. I'm not saying you have to do it to, you know, finish level if you don't have a tenant, but at least to the shell of what you, what you're gonna designate as the mixed component of the mixed use project. These are, my opinions, again, I'm just one, I'm just one member.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I had two items. I think Steve brought up some great, great items. The two things that struck me when I first started to review these. One, it seems like a great deal of pavement's in this area. And while I appreciate the, the attempt at trying to create some green space on the back and on the, on the, um, national grid side of things and the electric side of things, I think this design could potentially go a long way of adding some additional green space as a buffer along that fencing. I don't know what that does. I'm sure it probably does something for your, your circulation, which is already pretty tight in that area. And that's one of the other things that I had some questions, concerns about, um, in terms of circulation into that site. Again, forty-eight units. If everybody in there is working a regular nine-to-five job, it's gonna be pretty busy going in, in there and going out of there. And then, God forbid, if there is an emergency, um, I don't know that we've had any analysis done for, um, turning radius. Again, it seems kind of tight for, um, and I didn't see any turning radius, um-
That was a comment from the fire department in Graves, so we are, we're having that wrapped up right now.
Okay. So the, I mean, those are, those are really my, my two items of, you know, potentially looking at trying to do some, um, vegetated, additional vegetated buffer along that, what'd you call it, six foot fence that's, uh, abutting some of those properties, um, along Gordon Street. I think that would probably kind of help, um, soften the project a bit. And then again with the, the circulation.
Thank you.
This, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to open it up to members of the public wishing to speak on this item this evening, if there's anyone. Dean, if you'd like to come up?
Day Dean gone at forty-three Le Blank Road. I was a town meeting member when we changed the zoning for this area and made it a, um, made it the Lakeway Common District. This seems like we are exploiting the, um, multi-use district. Back to Steve's point, how are we getting enough retail in there? I think that we're actually just, the hairdresser there is a, a business, like it's, it's a business. And now we're, we're using that district just to put up apartments, in my opinion. It seems like we already had a business at, is that three oh eight or is that three twelve? That's three oh eight. So we already had a business that's been there, and now we're just using that to say, hey, we can use this, this zone so that we can build apartments. And I, I don't know how we're getting enough of a retail component or any kind of other component in this project to, to say like, oh yeah, we can put up forty. So I was just wondering how we can justify, um, using this district for this project. That's one. And I was wondering about the, um, business at three ten. What consideration is being given to that business? 'Cause she's basically being surrounded by this. And there's a dentist right there at three ten, and she's being iced out right there. And her whole business is being surrounded. So I was wondering what, if anybody's considering her business right there? 'Cause it's being built completely around her. So I'm hoping that consideration is being given to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members?
Yes, actually, thank you very much. I am the owner-
Can you please, um-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm the owner of, wait, three ten Boston Tempeh. Basically, my property, uh, my name, Jimbo Chang, I'm the owner, sorry. I'm the owner of three ten Boston Tempeh. According to this project, my building, or my property is surrounded by this project on the side, both side, on the back. And this gentleman didn't mention anything, what effort to improve or help my property. The property is used for the dental office, and my wife is the dentist. And over there, I, we have major concerns during the building of this, during the construction of this property project or even after that. First, during that, the construction will make a noise and then the contamination of the air of those things that have to be meet a requirement for being a dental office. We get approved from the health board from Shrewsbury Town. This is the major concern, noise and contamination. That's it. This is the one. Second is the after construction. They didn't make anything separation from my property to this project. I mean, when the parking is run out, I'm sure no matter this guest or somebody will park in the car into our property over there because the school can just next to each other. If we don't have a separation, they're gonna park a car over there. Second, because this is a very busy dental office. And during this, a normal hour, this is the project, it's family oriented. You're gonna get all those children running around, running all those things. If we do have separation, they can run into my property by accident. If the ball goes out, they brought and get into my property, the kids doesn't know care. They're gonna run into the property over my property to picking up the balls, to picking up the toys. And we have the car comes in, comes out, they could, a potential very dangerous situation. And don't forget, we have some senior patient that really do not handle things very well. You get all those children running around, around my property. I mean, this is potentially put inability on our business. So that's our major concern. And then they did, and do, according to this gentleman's presentation, is no consideration of my property considered that. I mean, I said the surrounding is understatement. It's seized by property.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just to add to that, his concerns were brought up at our outreach and, and the, the owners of Prestige did say that they would install fencing and landscaping so that wouldn't, there wouldn't be people potentially parking in his parking lot and cutting through or anything. So we'll provide good screening and separation. And i- if it's during construction, um, they wouldn't be opposed to having the screening installed first. So that'll be less impact during construction.
All right, thank you for that. Other members of the public wishing to speak on this? Yes, sir.
Mark Maggiore, nineteen Golden Road. I am an abutter. I just saw some of the, um, information that was, uh, put into the website about the comments. And I'm, I'm, before I go into my kind of talk, I, the service, you're talking about this garage right here? Is this, this was a, a service garage on, uh, three oh-
Three oh eight.
Three oh eight.
Three oh eight R.
Service garage? Okay. Do you know how long that was in service?
I don't know how long that has been in operation, no.
So it was an operating garage, like, that they had, like, a permit to service cars and everything?
I, I don't have that information this evening, but I can-
Okay. So, um, part of the, the question I have is, did they do a, a phase one and a phase two? Environmental phase one and phase two to this property? From what I, from I heard, they said they did not. For when they bought the property, they didn't do initial phase one, ASTM phase one for environmental?
I don't have that information, but-
Okay, so my concern with the service garage is that, um, they should look to see if there was any wrecks on that. Okay, so the property where they bought on three oh eight, the lot there, was owned by National Grid. So, uh, it was sold to ni- in nineteen ninety-six to National Grid. So they, they owned that property. Before that, the substation's right next to the substation, and that's been in business there since, I don't know, I think, the fifties or sixties. And before that, before they built the substation, it was an apple orchard. Okay. My concern, being right next to the substation at that time, is the soils around that substation could have PCBs, could have big contamination, could have high lead and high arsenic, especially for the apple. When they do the boring's, geotech points, I would like to see if they can do an environmental. The reason why I ask that is because they are gonna be exporting soil offsite, they can excavate it, and then they're gonna stockpile it there, okay? I'm an environmental consultant. I deal with developers all the time. This is my bread and butter. I, I deal with developers, I, I work with them, you know, they, they buy timid sites, we do phase ones. And we do wrecks in the service garage. We, we go behind the garage in fifties and sixties, they dump the oil in there, okay? If you see, you think, you're gonna have to, have to export the soil and they're gonna have to get it. If they leave that pile there over the weekend after construction, it's all gonna blow all over there, and it needs to be covered. I would like to have some concerns that there's no lead, no arsenic, no PCBs, nothing there. So before, when they do their geotech work, they should do that first. They should, they should at least have a wreck one there. So, uh, when I, when I heard that garage going down, I was like, that's, I, I mean, I do old garage services all the time. I drill behind them all the time. Sure enough, sure enough, there's always product in the, in the groundwater, you know, the soil.
Sure.
They need to ex- so that's, that's, I just found that out later on, so that's my major concern. This plan is still not on the website. So, uh, it's not, the land, you know, all the vegetation and everything is still not up. I asked for an email and it's still not there. So we didn't see this, all the other plans were on the website. We didn't see this until last Wednes- last Wednesday. So I wanted to take a big look at it on my, on my own. I still don't find it, and I still don't see the lighting. And yet I know that's one of your comments for that. So, um, I know they're probably gonna change it later on, but it would've been nice to see this so I can see exactly what the assess- assess. Okay, so I, I don't wanna make a lot of comments about landscaping just yet until I actually see a final design or initial design. 'Cause I just, I'm just not prepared for it.
Sure.
Okay. General, from the community outreach, the Frelon neighborhood, okay? It's one of the oldest ne- established neighborhoods in town. It's, first house was built in eighteen ninety-seven, and most of the lots were, uh, sold in nineteen sixteen. They are very small in demeanor. They're one or two stories high. Small swig footage, different styles of houses. Courtenages, keep cars, small colonials. Okay? It's, it's one of the few neighborhoods that you can actually afford, anyone that can afford in Shrewsbury. And it's one of the oldest ones. And this neighborhood is a, has a rich history of, um, multi-generational people living there for years. My grandparents bought their home on Science Ave in nineteen forty-nine. And when my grandmother passed away, my aunt lived there in two thousand and two. I consider that my second neck neighborhood. I grew up in Worcester. I grew up on all tops of three deckers, so I know what it looks like to see what people behind me. I moved into Shrewsbury, so I didn't have to deal with that. But, so my family's been in that neighborhood for nineteen forty-nine. My parents lived right next door, moved in, in thirty years ago. I moved in about fifteen years ago. So I have an established history since nineteen forty-nine in there. There are about three or four other families just like that, multi fam- multi-general families. And then there's about another four or five people who have lived in that neighborhood and either took over their parents' houses or moved back to the neighborhood. It is a very close-knit neighborhood. What I see over there is completely opposite of that neighborhood. It is just, and then we will be on top of it. And I just, and I, like you even said, it's just a lot of apartments with three la- less than three acres of land. If you take the same amount of acres of land and put it on Tatum and Science Road, it doesn't even equal eighty, eighty, you know, forty-eight houses. And you got eighty cars. It sometimes takes ten minutes to get out of that neighborhood on Route nine with the light cycle. Now, of course, they're gonna be past that light, so they'll probably maybe benefit from it. But sometimes we get caught on that light and it takes forever. And then always, there's always, always someone running that red light. And then you see the school bus. I'm assuming if there's gonna be kids, there's gonna be a school bus and they're probably gonna put their lights on there. When I come home from the gym in the morning and I'm waiting on the Maple Ave, here to turn onto Gordon Road, I always see a car run that red light. And when I see a bus there, they're gonna smack right into it. It's, it's a lot of people in a very small area. I am, okay, I knew this was property was gonna be developed at some point. When it got sold in two thousand and twenty-one, I was prepared for something being developed, but I thought it was gonna be more commercial. I thought there would be more boundary in there. When I saw the- I saw the amount of apartments here, I was floored. Floored of what could happen. And then the big elephant in the room is, you know, Mr. Sam Adams across the street on Maple Ave. He has, he's still probably gonna put, propose apartments where the old Canada Dry is. So if this gets developed, he's gonna come in and propose apartments right across the street, where, behind the subway and all that. It, it could, it could happen.
Appreciate that. It's speculation, but we have to make sure that we're focused on this, on this property.
No questions at this point.
Not on any questions, but I wanted to give you an, an idea of what, what's gonna be built and what's compared to the neighborhood.
No.
And it's gonna lose that. We, part of that Gordon Road is the buffer. It's the buffer and the privacy. And we're gonna lose all of it.
Understood.
Okay. So without the buffer, without the buffer, okay, if they don't reduce the number of apartments, it's gonna be hard. I do have questions on the, on the thing, but I, I'm gonna reserve that later on. I wanted to give my spiel on Failon neighborhood because I think
Appreciate it.
From the community outreach, that is the main issue. And it's gonna be rent this. They weren't proposing a fence at one time. So they were gonna be right on my yard. They were gonna go, they, they could literally walk into my yard. And one of the reasons why I did not, I have a fence there, I have a seat, part of my, part of the land is on town the right away. Okay? And what happened about six or seven years ago, there was a car pulled over on Route Nine, it was by Junivals. And they came around, couldn't get into the, out of the neighborhood, went through Ralph Ave with the substation, and right through my fence. I had to get half the fence replaced. Okay? So half my property is gonna be the fence. They weren't proposing the fence. So now I'm gonna have a small fence like this.
Understood.
Can we confine it to questions, just going forward?
Oh, yeah.
I appreciate your perspective and the perspective of that you're concerned historical, but, you know, the applicant has a proposal that he's set forth.
Yes.
And he's entitled to, he's entitled to, you know, submit the proposal, doesn't mean it gets approved.
No, no, no.
I want to confine it to the stuff that is addressed in the bylaw.
Oh, yeah. I know the bylaw and I, and I understand.
Okay.
I understand the bylaw. I know it's gonna get developed. I know. I just don't think that style, like that style
Sure.
fits the neighborhood. It, we're gonna be right on top. So without the big buffer, it's gonna be tough.
Okay.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
And I'm only doing that because, you know, you guys are not on the community outreach. So you guys are free hearing for the first time for the residents.
Sure.
I'm not sure if that gets translated.
You can only speak for yourself?
Yes. No, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this this evening? Seeing none, I think that there's still some work that needs to be done here, some questions that need to be answered. I think at this point in time, it would probably make sense to continue to...
Yeah. We, I took notes of all the comments, so we're gonna be looking to address those.
My suggestion, if the other members of the board agreed with some of my comments, I'm not sure whether they do or they don't, but I think it would make sense to segment this. Do interior traffic circulation plus traffic on Route Nine.
Yeah.
Deal with aesthetics, including architecturals and landscape. Deal with, as part of the aesthetics, you know, materials, et cetera, that would be used. Deal with stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
And deal with, what else? Traffic. And some of these could be, you know, individual meetings.
Sure.
You know, you might wanna talk to Chris as to how best to, to segment this.
So I think the topics as outlined, I think, are, are well done. I think what I would look for direction from the board this evening, if we're going that route, is if a full traffic study is required. If that's the case, I would just recommend that we flip stormwater and traffic. We can start with stormwater as that's, you know, Graves has largely completed their review, as was noted. Then do aesthetics and landscape. And that will allow traffic, and the peer review of traffic likely to be done by that time. And so then we should be able to at least have a full record of everything.
And let's talk about what they're gonna do on the commercial side, too.
Yeah.
All makes sense, all valid. Steve?
Okay. So following that schedule, is there a motion to continue this hearing to the next meeting, which is?
Thursday, October 2nd.
Thursday, October 2nd?
Yeah, I move that, that this project, we continue for October 2nd meeting at 7:00 PM here at the town hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As have it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Next item this evening, proposed common drive special permit, Prestige Property Development LLC. This is a continued public hearing for 29 Hill Street.
It's the same gentleman?
Yes.
Oh. Now, John didn't tell you one meeting, did he?
John's gonna charge for both of them. I don't get the double tip.
What is yours?
Oh, don't steal my, my tripod.
I'm getting personal.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
No, that's fine.
That's fine. Can I just go ahead or are you?
Sure, go right ahead. Welcome.
Okay.
Do we read the legal notice?
Um, that, yeah. This is a continued, they continued from last, last time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
You just...
Uh, we may, we may have continued it without opening the, or reading the notice. I think just to be safe.
Okay. We have the public notice.
It was not in here, Chris. There was just the one previous.
Let me pull it up.
As I, yeah, recall, you didn't have it printed last time. You have these memorized. You can just bring it off the top of your head.
I got it.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, August 7th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Select Board's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, to hear the application of Prestige Property Development, 13 Presidential Drive, South Brom, Mass. 01772, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury Zoning Bylaw, Section L, for a special permit by the Planning Board to allow for the creation of a common driveway to serve three house lots. The proposed layout plan is shown on a plan accompanied by the application that is named, quote, "Site Plan of Land at 29 Hill Street," end quote, prepared by Expedited Engineering, LLC, 118 Turnpike Road, Suite 300, South Brom, Mass. 01772, dated June 6, 2025, and stamped by James L. Tetra, P.E. The subject project is located at 29 Hill Street, northerly of Hill Street and west of Straw Hollow Lane, of and consists in whole, or in part, of Shrewsbury's Assessor's Tax Plate 10 Plot 017001. A copy of the application and plans may be seen in the Office of Planning and Economic Development at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website at www.shrewsburyma.gov/ongoingprojects.
Okay. So to the chair and the other board members, I'm James Tetra from Expedited Engineering, here representing Prestige Property Development. And as you just heard, the application before you is for a special permit for a common driveway on a 6.6 acre parcel of land off on the north side of Hill Street. It's what's bounded by the blue on this plan. And what this plan shows you is an expected area to be altered, shown in green with three proposed homes, brown, and the individual and common driveway access to them. The land, again, is 6.6 acres. It's in the residence B1 zoning district. These lots actually already exist. There is a recorded ANR plan at Plan Book 983, Plan 16, showing these boundaries and the easement for the common driveway. What we're proposing is the common driveway enter from the west end of this overall frontage. We're doing that to stay away from the wetlands. That's actually why we're here primarily, is to give ourselves the best project with respect to minimizing wetland impacts. We actually already have an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission for this plan. But we have a driveway access from the west end of the frontage. It goes up at a steady 3.8 percent, has a one small curve in it, bigger than a hun- more than a hundred-foot radius, whereas the, I could go, go through quick, your, your common driveway plans allow a common driveway up to 300 feet. That's 300 feet at this point here, where the other driveways have broken off. It says it must be at least 18 feet wide. This driveway is 18 feet at the entrance, again, just to stay away from wetlands, and then becomes 20 feet. It says that, prescribes grades that you're, that are acceptable. Again, we're just doing a 3.8 percent grade from the beginning to the end, which meets those requirements. It also prescribes that you, any turns in, it must have a minimum at least 50-foot radius. Again, we have a couple of small turns, bends in here, which have 100 and change foot radius. We're, we're meeting and exceeding all of the common driveway requirements in, in the zoning bylaw. Again, the application is to proposing three houses on these three existing lots. The way the driveway ends is to effectively create a turnaround, a Y-shaped turnaround using Lot 1's driveway and Lot 3's driveway, so that any vehicle coming up here can pull in, back up, and do their three-point that way. There was a previous plan that was in front of, I believe, just the Conservation Commission, which showed a big turnaround circle there. And that actually had quite a bit more impervious cover to it. And we actually reduced the impervious cover on site by a little over 4,000 square feet, in large part by taking out that big turnaround circle. So as I say, well, just quickly, the, the site is bounded to the west side by Straw Hollow Lane abutters. It's bounded to the north and east by Commonwealth of Mass land, on the west by the Abutter Brown, the south by Hill Street. The property descends from a high point over here to the north and to the east, very little bit into the street at all, actually. We've already done soil tests on site per the Conservation Commission's desires and for stormwater permit. The site is wonderful sand, as the soil maps predicted. And if you look closely at the topography in this area, you can see that I think somebody previously took some of that sand. Because it, the way the shape, it is shaped is very clearly, looks like somebody mined some, some gravel out of there previously. What we're proposing to do, I should, I would backtrack just a little bit. Again, the site is six acres. We're only proposing to alter two acres of it. And that is because of, off to the north side in that Commonwealth of Mass land, there's a perennial stream, Ross and Brook. Off to the east side, as you're going under Hill Street over here, there's another perennial stream unnamed. And because of the riverfront areas, which are shown on the red line that you'll see on the plans, the applicant, or any applicant here, would be limited in how much of the site they could alter. So the applicant's proposing these three homes to be over in this area and just a couple of small intrusions past that red line into the riverfront area to satisfy the Conservation Commission regulations. And I, and again, as I say, they've already issued an order of conditions to the same plan. But I guess I'll just say one, one or two more things. One is that, as part of that Conservation Commission plan, we were asked, when a couple of the commissioners had visited the site, they said, oh, jeez, I see some Japanese knotweed over here. And could you do something about that? And the applicants had their, their wetland scientists prepare a invasive species management plan. And which segues into, I want to say that we're asking for three waivers from the full special permit application requirements of a plan, which are a traffic report, which we don't think is really merited for just three lots, a landscaping plan. And as part of that invasive species management plan, these, a wetland scientist put forth in the first 175 feet of the, of the site, specific plantings that he wanted done there to fight any future comeback by the, the Japanese knotweed. So to some degree, the applicant actually already has a landscaping plan at the entrance of the site, as prescribed by the wetland scientist. And the other, the third item which, for which we would request a waiver, is a lighting plan. And there's not gonna be any lighting at the entrance. There'll be, you know, individual lights on the homes, as you would normally expect. But just as a quick thing, if you look at these couple houses closer to Abutters, you have a first floor of about 573, the back of the line here is 580, yeah, 589. So this is 16 feet higher than the first floor elevation of the house here. And these folks over on the Straw Hollow side, it's actually gonna be, right now, it's sort of a Straw Hollow comes up to a plateau on our side. It's actually gonna be Straw Hollow comes up and this side, there's gonna be cutting in this area, and this side comes up. So both sides of this, the existing neighborhood and these couple homes here, are gonna be relatively recessed compared to the elevation at the property line. So again, there's only gonna be commonplace normal lights on, on the ho- homes, and really no one is gonna be able to see it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll leave it at that and just try and answer any questions.
Okay. Any staff questions or comments?
Yeah. So we provided a comment letter for this project. There is still some outstanding comments from engineering in regards to sewer connections that would need to be addressed, if not already, and contours. In addition, we have received some public comment in regards to the Ross and Hill Trail and the Trails Committee, and looking at if there's a potential to provide some kind of easement or trail connection to that Ross and Hill Trail. I have contacted some members, not the Trails Committee itself, but members of the Trails Committee, to discuss the Ross and Hill area. I think some additional review needs to be made, but for the, you know, purposes of this plan, I think if the applicant would consider some public easement along the wetlands to the edge of the property, that may suffice and we can look at connecting it to the trail system. That could be done as part of the, the final plan set.
Okay. Okay.
And through the chair, I, I think the applicant would, would not have objection to that. And I just wanna... to that, and I just want to, just quickly, one of the other items Chris mentioned was that Andy Truman had suggested showing additional contours in this act, this last version dated 8/25. We actually did show the one-foot contours through here, where I think it was, I think that was the area he was really looking for it. And he had also asked for us to propose a safety fence at, just next to the property line, at the backs of these, where you've got, you know, two-to-one slope for quite a, for a fairly good height. And that's also added to that latest plan dated August 25.
Okay, okay. Members of the board, any questions or comments? Do you know?
No.
I just have one question. I don't know, follow up to what Chris mentioned about departmental comments. I was wondering if, if the Shrewsbury fires, fire folks need to look at that Y-type of driveway versus a circle from a fire protection point of view, if there's any concern from the fire department, though?
So, Fire Department did review, they approved their step without comment. I might be happy to reach back out to them with specifics of, of turning accommodations.
Is there going to be a hydrant or a cistern? I couldn't see it on the plan.
Um, no, these are, and, and these are individual water services coming up the east side of the driveway, and then splitting off to each of the houses.
There's not going to be a hydrant at one of the Y, or?
There's not a hydrant proposed, no.
Okay. Something to consider. And, and these lots have paid the benefit, all for all three?
Oh, I don't know either. Not sure.
Might be, that might be something you want to talk to water and sewer about, because you don't want to be designing.
So, how far away would the nearest hydrant be?
Oh, shit. I'm not sure. I have to tap my head. Can either of you remember?
Right across the street, at the mouth of the driveway, within reasonable distance, there's a, there's a hydrant there. Actually, it was just replaced, too.
I have a question for you. I, I just happened to be driving down Hill Street, drove past the site this afternoon, and it seemed, coming from the, from the west to east, west to east, there, there's a, a bit more of a grade there. Do you have any, is there any grading challenges as you first pull into the driveway that would require retainage, or retainage, retaining walls, or anything of that nature, or is that my eyes playing games on me?
No, there, there isn't, by the time you get to the frontage of this property, there is a retaining wall in front of the property immediately to the west.
Okay.
And it's actually, we went out there, I had submitted a memorandum dated July 7, in regard to, there was, there initially came up a question, "Do you have a good enough site distance, looking from here, looking to the west?" And we went out there and did the standard look with, you know, your eye at the, at the 1,070-millimeter, 42-inch height, and an object being 1,300 millimeters or 52 inches high, and to see how far we could see. And the limitation actually is that Abutters retaining wall. We thought the limitation might be the, the change of grade, but the limitation is that, beyond a certain point, the, if you're sitting where a driver would be, the driver's eye is seven feet off from the curb, that retaining wall blocks you from seeing cars as they're approaching any, any further than a certain position. What you can see is in front of the next house past that.
Okay. All right, great. Any other board member comments or questions?
Will these be on septic?
No. These houses would all have, would have individual sewer and water services. We had initially proposed a, a, a couple of sewer manholes coming up the street, and engineering told us that procedurally, we would need to do this as three individual services.
And they said, "Okay, you can tie in."
They said, "As long as we can meet the separation specs."
Which are 10 feet from any water.
Which you must have paid.
We basically put the sewer on one side of the driveway, the left side, as you go up, and the water services on the right side.
Because you know there is a moratorium.
Yeah, so, so that's why they're, they're allowed to tie in with the three services. They cannot extend up the, up the roadway per that order, because they're not in the needs area.
So, for the entire length of the driveway, you're going to have one sewer line and one water line, they're going to just?
No.
No, three separate.
It, yeah, three, three separate lines, running sewer, running up the west side, three separate water running up the east side, and then they split off at the, where.
Are you going to be able to maintain 10-foot separation between water and sewer?
Yes.
Well, the, the driveway, again, itself here, for most of this length, is 20 feet wide. So, we can, you can fit the sewers on one side and the waters on the other comfortably.
Is it safe to assume the rest of your utilities are running in the, the middle of the driveway, then?
Well, you've got water, sewer, the two sides. You've got drain actually running through the middle, yes. You got, I should have pointed out, we're, what's proposed here is that until you get from, from Hill Street, I should say, until you get to the point where the driveway's split off, this driveway has curving. And there are a pair of catch basins, basically in the middle of it, capturing flow, and sending it through drain manhole and a CDS unit, and then into infiltration here. And there are a pair of catch basins near the bottom, and similarly, through drain manhole, CDS unit, and into infiltration.
And, James, you're going to submit like an HOA or a common driveway maintenance, because?
We, we did submit an operation and maintenance plan as part of the Conservation Commission review, but on the legal side of that, that's, that hasn't been done yet.
I would suggest that that be a condition, that we take a look at that, because when these people buy these properties, I want them to understand what they're buying into.
Fair enough.
With the three separate water lines, three separate sewer lines. It's, it's not a subdivision, it's three ANR lots. But there's, those, those lines are all going to be underneath that common driveway.
Yep.
If, if I may, it's a little deceiving on the plan. The proposal is to not put all of the utilities directly under the asphalt driveway. We have some room that flanks either side of the driveway, between our property line and the wetland buffer. So, we can space those utilities out accordingly to meet all the minimum requirements for spacing.
It'd still be a good idea to have that HOA, or whatever you want to call it.
It will be established for the common part of the driveway.
Yeah, record it.
Exactly.
You, you know what you are.
Yeah.
You know.
Lot of paperwork, but we, we expect it to do that.
It's okay, lawyer's getting paid, doesn't bother me.
All right. This is a public hearing. Are there members of the public wishing to speak on this item this evening? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Carrie Brown, 27 Hill Street. I just had a few questions I wasn't sure about, and I was hoping we could clarify tonight. I'm looking at page two of the memorandum regarding site distance at 29 Hill Street, last paragraph, which says, "The site distance could be improved by a relocation of the retaining wall in front of number 27, and it is clearly within the right-of-way." And so, I kind of wanted to understand what the right-of-way was, because on my plan, the right-of-way is on 25 Hill Street. It's our driveway. I have pictures of our driveway. It leads to 27 Hill Street, and the right-of-way ends at our property line. And so, I do have our plan, and I have pictures of the driveway, because it just was very unclear from this, what, what it, the amount that we're talking about, and how it could move back. So, if the retaining wall, wall tour will move back a little bit, then we don't have a driveway in front of our house. So, I just, I want that to be under consideration, that we use this driveway daily to get to and from work, and we need access to our driveway to get to and from work. I've also heard other plans, and respectfully, I've seen houses, and I, I, you know, understand your architecture, and I agree. Well, Steve, I love them, they're, they're great. And I've heard that you've done screening on lots of places. There is not a plan for screening on here for us. We would love that. We have a pool in our backyard, and these houses that are going to be built do not meet what they were saying on Straw Hollow. We sit lower than Straw Hollow, and so, any house that has a second floor behind us is going to see us swimming. And so, that's a consideration I would like made. Also, we have a foundation that goes in between both of our properties, and the previous developer, who just came in and bulldozed everything and battered everything down, has changed the elevations. And so, now that foundation is just pushed down, and we still have a big chunk of the foundation on our side, and it was never cleaned up. There's a bunch of stumps there now, so if you go out and look, you can, you can see. So, I'd love some consideration around what's going to be done to address that area, so that we're, we don't have a low land. And since the last developer's cut down all the trees, we now have a big puddle that's at the bottom of our circle driveway. And so, would love some considerations around drainage and how to prevent that going forward. Thank you. A few other plans. I do have them, if you would like these.
Thank you, thank you.
And just quickly, through the chair, the memorandum regarding site distance mentioned the, the Abutters retaining wall, simply because, just as a sort of a pro forma thing, as if you're saying that you have X feet of site distance, why don't you have more? We were just identifying the reason. We, we, there's no proposal to, to touch the, the Abutters property.
Okay.
If I may, through the chair.
Yes.
So, I did speak to Jonathan Brown, the, the Abutter, and there was a dilapidated barn or garage structure that, that was there, but the fieldstone foundation there, but it's kind of toppled over. So, I'm going to work with them to clean that up. And then, just for the record, we will not be encroaching on their property whatsoever. So, the wall was just referenced as a benchmark in the language, but there's no work to be done on their property or close to their retaining wall. And then, I'll gladly meet with them off-record to discuss some screening options, because they do sit higher than us. So, it may be to their benefit to have us work with them on some fencing or screening on the, on their property to encapsulate their backyard, to give them a little bit more privacy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Hold on one second, ma'am. Yes.
Hi. Deena Franzman, I'm at 25 Hill Street. Excuse my attire. I didn't realize I'd be coming here until I found out about the easement and all that.
Happy to have you.
I'm also concerned, because I didn't realize that the houses were going to be so close to Straw Hollow, where I would probably need screening as well, because one of the reasons I bought the house was because there was a good amount of land that I wouldn't be seeing any other houses. So, I didn't know there'd be houses back there that close. And my other concern is that the area that I believe they're putting the driveway, it's a blind driveway. Carrie and John's house and my house are on kind of a blind driveway. So, as you were mentioning, when you go up Hill Street, there's sort of a grade. When people are coming east to west on that side of the street, our driveways are totally blind to them, and they come up and over that hill like crazy. So, that's just a concern I have, because any kind of delivery drivers or anything like that, that like to park on Hill Street, it's like, they might get in an accident, because people come up and over that hill like bad out of, you know, where. So, that's my only concern is the, if the retaining wall is taking any part of that, the easement is actually my property. Then the screening behind 25 Hill Street and the dangerous, you know, driveway situation. That's all I wanted to mention.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other members of the public? Yes, Jaden.
Jaden Gonat, 43 LeBlanc Road. I happen to live across the street from a duplex that this developer has built, and I would just hope for the new neighbors' sake that they would do a little better with drainage if this is a wet site, because where this duplex is now, it is literally sitting in a puddle for a large majority of the year. The, the owner that bought the duplex came out screaming the first year. She wanted to know why her house was, had a significant amount of water, the whole backyard. I have pictures. And it's just, there's a lot of water, so I would hope you would do something for, for good drainage, because if there's water there now, then there's going to be a lot more water once this site is developed. So, I just encourage you, for your neighbors there, that they don't deal with what our neighborhood is dealing with, because there is a lot of water that has accumulated since we had a small, single-family, and now a duplex. So, there's a significant more, significantly more water that wasn't there before, or it might have been there, but now it just has channeled in different directions, and hopefully, it will be dealt with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the pub? Yes, sir.
Hello. Jonathan Brown, 27 Hill Street. I appreciate you guys talking about the trail, the walking trail going around the back. I was hoping, there, there is access, like, here's the property line, and it looked like it hadn't been cleared along this ridge here to get back into the woods. There's beautiful walking trails all back on Ross and Hill. I was wondering if, if that could be a consideration to, to have like a, just a walking trail easement on that ridge, possibly?
Uh, something we could look into.
Yeah, okay, cool. I appreciate that. Yeah, and, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because the lowest spot, this is the back, this is the lower driveway, and that's like the lowest spot on this elevation. So, it looked like you had a pretty good filtration system going. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that doesn't get worse when you, when you disturb that area.
Yes, we, we did do some, through the chair, we did do some stormwater calculations, and we're going to be retaining a majority of our sheet flow and drainage to infiltrate within the site. So, there shouldn't be much runoff or sheet flow at all.
Fantastic. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Anyone else from the public this evening? All right. What is the wish of the board? It sounds like there might still be, we'd like to perhaps get some additional information from, some feedback from the Fire Department in terms of access to the site. Trying to think if there's other items that we want to try and see if we can, we need to get for the next hearing, or for the next meeting, any?
Hydrant potential.
Yeah, I, I think there's a number of items that have been brought up that probably should be included in the record or shown on the plans. The bulk of what was discussed, I also think a lot of those can be addressed as conditions of approval. So, I'm happy to start drafting a decision for the board's consideration while we collect the remainder of that information.
Sure.
That was discussed, and hopefully, then, by next meeting, we can potentially act on both.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. So, if it's all right, we'll look at continuing this hearing until next meeting. We'll get some of this additional information, and we'll proceed from there.
Sure thing. Thank you.
I remember that we continue the public hearing on the common driveway for 29 Hill Street until Thursday, October 2nd at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next item this evening, proposed two-family and FAR up to 4.0 site plan and special permit. Mr. Armani, this is continued public hearing for 9 Alcott Road.
Okay, Mr. Armani is here, right?
Yes, he is.
So, just addressing some of the remaining items, so from the board's discussion, last meeting, there was questions related to the sheds and the inclusion on the FAR calculations. Both calculations for the shed or not the shed, the, the information's provided. You have to do some calculation to, you know, it doesn't actually, the table that was provided doesn't explicitly say which one, but looking at those, the information is there. Both instances require both the special permit that is before the board and the variance that has been granted from the zoning board of appeals. The other remaining question was in relation to construction of a structure that was on the property. We did coordinate with the building department, as well as the applicant, and reviewed what was being constructed. It is a pergola over a garden space, which is primarily used with, with some additional fencing around it in order to protect the, the garden space from wildlife. In coordination with the building inspector, that does not- In coordination with the building inspector, that does not trigger a, a building permit and so that would not be included in the FAR. We also did note from those inspections that the applicant has indeed removed one of the two sheds that are included in the FAR. It's the smaller of the two, but that has further reduced those calculations.
Any board member comments, questions on this?
Nope.
No comment.
My only comment would be, Mr. Armani, don't come back looking for anything else because we're not gonna give it to you. Well, I'm just one member, but.
The second shed, I didn't do anything.
Okay.
Just I protect my garden and I don't wanna do anything illegal.
Okay.
And I removed the second shed and just I stopped working anything now and I'm not doing anything.
Finish the project as approved. Don't make any alterations in the field without consulting the planning department or the building department, okay?
Any other board members on this?
Only that, it's, it seems clear, unless it can otherwise be shown, that the, that the bylaw clearly states that it just doesn't, you don't meet the criteria for approval, Mr. Armani.
This is still, are you good?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This is still a public hearing. Are there members of the public wishing to speak on this, this evening?
Can I just ask one question, please? Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Deidre Gonnatt, 43 Le Blank Road. So just to clarify, somebody did go down to the property and?
Correct, they took photos of the pergola.
Okay, and like the wall right up against the, the stream and everything?
Correct, yes, so it's a pergola and some fencing.
Yeah, no, I, I know what it all is, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's all on conservation now. That's all conservation's problem.
I haven't reviewed with conservation, but I.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, any, anyone else from the public on this? All right, seeing none, I think we are at a point where we're in a position to close this public hearing. Is there a motion to close this public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing on this site plan application and the special permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Chris, are we in a position to, do we have to, we have the decisions?
We have the draft decision.
I have the decision for site plan approval, I haven't, I don't have the special permit.
No?
Maybe you guys do.
I don't think I have it with me, but.
Um, we can do the decisions at the next meeting.
Okay, we'll plan to, okay, we'll plan to do that decision at the next meeting.
Site plan approval.
That's all I got.
Okay.
And this is, is this special, is this, are these the two, Julie?
Special permit, site plan approval.
Oh, it is?
Yep. We'll, we'll plan to, we'll take those up at the next, at the next meeting and vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's closed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, discuss and deliberate 193 Hartford Turnpike site plan approval decision?
If, I don't care, it's fine, doesn't matter. I'm staying, staying or sticking around. I have a conflict on two of them. I have a conflict on two of them, I don't have a conflict on Green Street, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Tim and I are sticking around.
All right, so 193 Hartford Turnpike site, site plan approval, so this public hearing is closed, we have a draft decision?
We do, so, and I wanted to, to note a couple edits that were received. I know I sent the board a revised draft decision, I believe it was on the 28th. So from that decision, we received some additional comments back from board members which have been incorporated in the decision that's before you, this evening. Some of those edits were kind of minor procedural items. Two items that I do wanna draw the board's attention to were two new conditions that have been added. One is in relation to an internal operational audit which would be conducted at six months and 12 months after full occupancy of the site as well as a delivery truck management plan which mirrors the, both of those in tandem kind of mirror the traffic demand management plan and the post-occupancy monitoring, but rather than being external of the site, those are additional monitoring interior of the site and those other ones are specifically in relation to the delivery trucks. We also removed some of the language regarding site-specific traffic which was still in there. We, you know, we had removed references to DSM but had retained some of the language regarding site-specific in discussing that condition. The language seemed to overcomplicate it rather than providing significant benefit to the decision. So we've opted to remove that in this decision. And then one remaining item for the board's deliberation this evening is the condition regarding illegal turn monitoring at the intersection of Lake Street and the Demoulis intersection and specifically around the terms traffic trailer or vehicles. We've kind of gone back and forth on those, whether it's the fully-inclusive vehicles in regards to that illegal turn or if we should just be monitoring for tractor trailers. I wanted to defer that to the board of which was more appropriate, if it's just specifically the tractor trailers or if the board would rather consider the full, more comprehensive, all-vehicle turning movements.
I prefer the more comprehensive, personally. I, I don't know how the board feels about that.
I agree.
Okay, is that it?
Yep.
All right. I think we, if we're ready, I think we can, I guess I should ask, is it any, any comments from the board on this matter this evening?
No comment.
It's been what, a couple of months now?
I'll say just before we go to vote, I, I know candidly, this has not been my favorite project and I, I do still have some hesitation about the, the amount of activity that is going to be happening within the site. That being said, I do think that the decision that we've kind of put together really tries to make sure that we are keeping as close an eye on some of that stuff as we possibly can. So I, I, I wish you, I wish you luck, but, um, so. So at that, with that, I'd like to ask for a motion on this decision this evening. Is there a motion for, um, the decision for site plan approval?
I make a motion to approve the site plan.
Second.
All right, do we have to do a roll call on this or is it?
Uh, no, it'll just be one.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, the ayes have it. Thank you. You're all set?
Thank you.
It's been a slog. I appreciate your, your patience dealing with us on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, discuss and vote to amend the bond issued for 3369 Green Street.
Uh, thank you. So the bond was previously issued for this project. In reviewing it, there was some minor typos, but of substance, it was noted, given the construction schedule for the project at the two-year bond period that was previously approved, that the project will not be completed within that two-year timeframe. So one of the amendments is to extend that to four years and that is a substantial change that we wanted to bring to the board for their consideration. That said, it is a longer bond period in line with the timeline of the project and we are, you know, amenable to that.
Okay. Any issues?
No.
Questions, comments?
No.
Seems to make sense.
Sure. All right, so I think that the question on the table is, is there a motion to amend the bond issued for 3369 Green Street?
Does it need to go through motion process or just?
Uh, yes, it does, yeah.
Okay, I move that we amend bond issue for 3369 Green Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay. Next, discuss and vote to correct the decision on, for 297 Cherry Street site plan approval.
So the, after the, the decision was rendered, it was noted that the applicant's name as written was incorrect. That was incorrectly supplied to us, so this would just change the reference name of the applicant to what is correct.
Okay.
Is that mostly some typographical error or totally a different name altogether?
Uh, it, it was related to, I think the order essentially of the RWE energy, battery energy storage company. Can pull up the exact difference. Yeah, so R, RWE Clean Energy Development LLC to RWE Clean Energy DCE Development LLC.
That's some.
Yeah, okay.
Minor, but substantive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, is there a motion to correct the decision for 297?
I move that, yeah, I move that we correct the decision for 297 Cherry Street site plan approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, next is discuss and vote on bond reduction for Summit Ridge Estates.
Thank you. So this subdivision has been around for quite some time. The applicant has been working diligently to complete some of the work related to it. There is still some remaining work to be done, but we have received a request for a bond reduction. The board will remember, we were kind of reviewing this with engineering. We now have that reduction amount has been reviewed by engineering department and they have recommended a slate. So it's technically three bonds for each of the three phases and this reduction would be for all three phases included. We have that slate that the town engineer provided that details all of that. Still a significant amount of money held to compel the completion of the subdivision, but it's in line with the work that has been completed so far.
So everyone's, everyone, town's comfortable with those?
Correct.
Okay.
How long's it been going on?
Twenty years.
Twenty years? How much is it reduced by in dollars?
So phase one, the current bond is $278,400. The recommended reduction is $97,000 which will leave $181,400. Phase two is going from $143,500, recommended reduction of $94,100, bringing it to just, just shy of $50,000. And then phase three is currently $285,800 with a recommended reduction of $211, bringing it to just shy of $75,000.
Okay.
Are those indefinite, these bonds for these projects? I mean, how long could it potentially go?
So it's, it's related to the work, so as they complete the work, they're allowed to recommend or to request reductions related to that work.
Yeah.
So it, you know, presumably could go on in perpetuity until the subdivision is complete and the town has no more liability to have to do the work themselves.
Got it.
The problem is if we don't have enough, if the developer goes belly up, we don't have enough money to, to complete the road based on what we have in the passbook. That's the issue, but.
So at, at, at what time do we pull the bond and just complete the work ourselves then?
Generally, that's a last resort as long as the developer is completing work and, and working, which this, this developer is. You wouldn't pull those, there's no, no set kind of time to do that, but if for whatever reason, if a developer was no longer in existence or if they had stalled on a project or, or there were significant issues, that's something that the board could then, if they're in violation of the bond documents, they could then pull that bond and rebid the project.
Not at once that I've been on the board. We did it on that little subdivision off of an old mill where the condos duplexes, we pulled, we pulled the bond on that. It was an actual bond too, it was a, not a passbook. The bonding company had to come in and finish the job.
Yeah, generally a last resort. If you're, if you're there, it's a, not a great situation.
No.
Okay.
All right, so is there a motion on the table to accept the proposed bond reduction for Summit Ridge Estates?
Make a move to reduce the bond for Summit Ridge Estates.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. No correspondence this evening?
None this evening.
With that, I think I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you very much.